Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act pursuant to Publics Law in 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacey Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Like the stamp that flew to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, before we start, I'd like to say, this is the first time I've had a full house like this. It really feels great. I love seeing people come out, and whether it be for whatever we're doing, for the Lacey Cheer Team or whatever, to come out and see us and speak to us. We really enjoy that, so I want to thank you before we start. First, proclamation for the Lacey Lions Division Twelve Cheer Team.
Alright, so, why don't you go down there and then as I call the children's names, you can hand them out.
Keep them, keep them all up.
And please, I'm gonna apologize when I'm reading the names, because I'll probably really murder some of them. Whereas the Lacey Township Committee wishes to recognize the character, talent, and hard work exemplified by the Lacey Lions Division Twelve Cheer Team for their outstanding athletic performance. Whereas the Lacey Lions are part of the Jersey Shore Conference within American Youth Football and American Youth Cheer with over 140 participants. Whereas for over forty years, the nonprofit organizations, first Pop Warner and now American Youth Football and Cheer, has provided our local youth with the opportunity to excel in football and cheering programs. Whereas their commitment on the field and on the mat helps to build character, self-reliance, accountability, teamwork, and discipline in our children, which will serve them well as they advance in life, as proven by many scholastic and professional successes of former Lions. Whereas the Lions were the only team out of forty-one teams competing that were awarded the Spirit Award for demonstrating spirit for their team and all other teams competing. Whereas the Lacey Lions 2017 Division Twelve Cheer Team captured first place in the 2017 Jersey Shore Conference, first place in the 2017 Big East Region, advancing two and finishing third in the nation at the 2017 American Youth Cheer Nationals in Orlando, Florida. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Township Committee, the Township of Lacey, that this special recognition and commendation be given to the Lacey Lions Division Twelve Large White Cheer. Alright, as I state your names, you can come up and receive a proclamation from Mayor Juliana. Julia Barrett. Mary Cecilia Mantilla. Zoe McGuinness. Lena Bolair. Abigail Martins. Jaden Eisman. Gianna Baldwin. Angelina Terzo. Demos, it's Caitlin Pereira. Lauren Dial. Alexa Terzo. And of course, we have our coaches. Assistant Coach Jessica Ott. Assistant Coach Michelle Stamaianis. And Head Coach Carolyn Holland. I hope I didn't miss anybody, did I? Did I miss anybody?
We got everybody.
Okay, well here's an extra one if you need it.
Thank you very much.
So there you go.
Thank you.
Alrighty?
Congratulations.
Thank you. So why don't you young ladies get up here in the front and get some pictures, and I think you have your trophy over there too, which is bigger than some of you's? You should be down there with them.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I hate that, because I'm always like, "Oh, no, no."
You told their stuff over here?
Pretty good.
Two of you? Yep, three of you? That's great, you know how these are. Hey, this is her.
No, it's all about something else.
We'll start off with Committee McQuinn.
Okay, thank you Mayor. Ladies, coaches, you know, congratulations, you know, it's quite an accomplishment to be able to do what you did and, you know, go down to Orlando, represent our little town here, and come back, you know, with the trophy the way you did, you know. We're certainly very, very proud of you. I have to tell you, I haven't seen Mayor Nick smile this much since he took over January 1st. So you definitely did make his night coming here tonight, and you know, it's something that we're all very happy about.
No doubt.
When you go home, ladies, you know, don't forget, you know, you've done a great thing, but make sure each and every one of you thank your moms, your dads. I see a lot of grandparents in the room tonight, you know, and I can relate to them a lot more. You know, it's a team effort, your whole family's always behind you, and you know, thank them for all that they do, and keep going, we're gonna see great things as you young ladies go up through the ranks and end up in a high school as our senior cheerleaders, so best of luck, and coach, great job.
Committee McQuinn, would you like to?
Thank you Mayor, yes I would. I, I'm fortunate to govern my colleagues up here, but I guess I'll separate myself from them just a little bit tonight, because we have the girls here. All the men that I govern with have a son, or a daughter, or just sons. Well, I only have a little girl, and I gotta tell you, I'm partial. And so, I'm all about girl power, I gotta tell you, I've said that so many times, yeah, give yourself a round of applause. To see everybody up here and represent us in a huge state like Florida, from our township here, to see the activity and the positive interaction and the happy faces, it really is heartwarming, I'm very, very appreciative, I know I'm not alone, the whole town will see this on TV, as they should. So, anybody within the earshot, or the eyeshot of my voice or my face, congratulate our girls here, they're the greatest, and God bless you.
Committee McKennitt?
Thank you Mayor. Could we clear the room, I want to hear award-winning cheer. I do want to acknowledge the time commitment for both the coaches and the parents, my son was in AYF football for three years, and my daughter did cheer for two years, so it is a huge time commitment on the families and the coaches as well, so I just want to acknowledge that, and just want to say congratulations, girls, on a job well done.
I would also like to thank, especially the coaches, all the girls who participated in the, and made us so proud here in Lacey Township, and also to the parents. I know a lot of things like this take a lot of time, and the people it put forward to make you shine like you did, so I want to thank the parents, the coaches, everything, you know, give yourself applause. Committee McQuinn said, yes, this put a smile on my face, anytime it has anything to do with children, because that's our future, I do smile, and I want to thank you very much for all the time you put in to make this all possible for them, thank you. One more round of applause. If you'd like to leave before we start a meeting, you're more than welcome, we'll wait till you.
You're more than welcome to stay, but you might be bored.
You're more than welcome to stay. You'll keep a smile on my face the whole meeting, see that?
Just gonna clean out now.
I mean, I think I can still say it face off, but just take a shot with my nose.
We, as a municipality, we always have.
Coach, could I ask you a question? Is any of the competition down in Orlando on YouTube, can I see?
He's gotta work, he's gotta work with us, that's all.
You and Timmy, what do you do with the black?
Veronica, I'm sure she'd like to send it to all of us, I'd love to keep it.
I'm gonna say some bad times.
Please, please, thank you.
Yeah, you saw many ones, it's on the table out there.
I did say it, too. Who gave it to us?
New Jersey Pats Association.
Because I don't need it.
Thank you.
It was best in design.
Now you can say you haven't had it, we're gonna call it the Old Guard after the Young Guard.
I will, with no doubt.
Before we go on to the second one, we have an add-on, Mike Sowa from the Old Guard, I'd like him to come up. I had the honor to go to one of his, the meetings for the Old Guard and speak there, and what a bunch of great guys, and everything they do for the community. I never realized, and I started this when I was on the committee a while ago, I wanted people to come to talk about their organizations, so people in the town know what you do, and support them, because they do great things, and that's why, you know, I invited him here tonight, Mike Sowa. And any of the Old Guard that's with them, they all can come up.
Yeah, they're right here.
Yeah, well, well.
It's getting close to the bedtime, we gotta let these guys go first.
Go for it.
Go for it, why not?
The time is yours.
Face the camera, too.
Sir, how are you?
Good, good.
And make sure you guys face the camera.
Yes.
Not your backside to the camera, your front side.
Good evening, Committee Mayor, Virginia Council, Senate people of Lacey Township. I am here at the invitation of Mayor Nick, he was at our meetings a while ago. My name's Mike Sowa, I live here in Sunrise Beach, I'm the current Director of the Old Guard of Forker River Chapter Nineteen. He came over to our meeting, gave a talk, and asked, "What is the Old Guard?" The Old Guard's a social organization, a retired, semi-retired gentleman. We meet every Monday morning over at the Community Hall for fellowship and discussion of topics of mutual interest. We BS a lot, gossip a little bit, generally have good camaraderie. It's a, men of all walks of life, among these individuals right here, we have a retired 747 pilot, a fireman, a business owner, a man who works for a liquor distribution outfit, I'm trying to get some Pappy Van Winkle from him. A talented man that owns his own scissor company, but retired military insurance, we have all walks of life, we cover the waterfront here in Forker River. The original Old Guard chapter was founded in Summit in 1930, with some retired gentlemen from Manhattan who had time on their hands, wanted to get together with their buddies and talk, so they started it. We're Chapter Nineteen, we were founded in 1968 by Walter L. Smith, some of you may know him. We have 115 members on our roster, we have 70 at our weekly meetings now. During the summer, we'll grow to about 90 at the meetings every Monday morning, in January, we drop down to about 60, the snowbirds head south. We meet every Monday morning, 8:30 to 10:00, at 8:30, the doors open to Community Hall, we have coffee and doughnuts, we all meet and gossip, well, discuss, have discussions for an hour and a half. The business meeting starts at 10 o'clock, short business meeting, usually half hour or less, and then we have speakers with topics of interest. The mayor mentioned, he was there a few weeks ago, told us about what's happening over at the power plant. About two months ago, we had Officer Hain from the Lacey, that's her son, from the Lacey Police Department, spoke to us about the kinds of fraud that are being attempted to be perpetrated on senior citizens here in Forker River. He gave a very good talk about it. We had a representative from the Joint Base up at Dix Maguire, Lake Hurst, talked about the new refuelers that are coming in there, the new airplanes, medical service people come speak to us about ailments of old people, we're all old in the Old Guard. And fed power plant there and others. What additional social activity we have, we have a lending library, when people bring in old books they're tired of, and we pass them around, it's all on the honor system, if you like them, keep them, what the heck. We celebrate birthdays and anniversaries each month, if you were born or married in that month, we sing to you, and you get to have a free, big, nice Danish pastry, not just a doughnut, and a free cup of coffee, so it's an extra treat for being a member of the club. We have monthly bus trips to Atlantic City, sometimes two if there are good shows down there. We have two dinner dances a year, a pool dance and a spring dance. Spring dance is coming up in three or four, about a month or so, that's our chairman there. The spring dance is gonna be over at the Captain's Inn, that's always nice, Debbie always does a good job over there. We have music, we have dancing, all people dance, by the way, we have dancing, there we do, there you go, I agree. We have an annual picnic up at Gilly Park, burgers, and dogs, and spare ribs, all kinds of good stuff. As a matter of fact, this coming week, next Monday, we're gonna have corned beef, cabbage, and potatoes, we're celebrating St. Patty's Day, be an early, a little early lunch, a little early for St. Patty, but that's the day we meet, so we're going to have it. And then the summer, for 4th of July, we'll have hot dogs. In addition, the town, thank you town, they rebuilt and reconditioned the bocce courts over there a year or two ago. Casey Parker did a magnificent job, we have the best bocce courts in New Jersey, I think. So we have a bocce league, I'm not Italian, but I play. We have four registered teams, a lot of pickup teams, and a traveling all-star team. There it is, we live in Pheasant Run, we play you guys. I think I'll follow up with what this lady just said, we have home and away games with the guys from Pheasant Run, bocce, our all-star team goes up there, we always lose, but we analyze the problem, we play for fun, we don't give a damn if you step over the line or drop your ball too hard, those guys play for blood, they're all too serious. We find that's their problem, you can tell by the names of our teams, I play on the ballbusters. This guy plays on the balls to the walls. This guy over here, who happened to be on the team that won last year, he won the prestigious soup can trophy, it's made out of the highest quality soup cans, sprayed silver with the highest quality Home Depot silver paint, and we put little black retinas on the bocce players, had the name of the team. His team, the Sandhogs, won last year. They have another team called the Pacemakers. Everybody loves the Pacemakers, I'm serious about this, everybody on the team, including this guy right there, have Pacemakers. They always lose, they're always the last player. In a good national way, while we're playing, we tell them, "All you guys need adjustments", you know, pick and break. I think I missed the team, but I don't remember who they were, balls to the walls, ballbusters, what have you. Sometimes it makes a damn much noise out there, the people from Vet Works, the Warden House, come out this year for having a riot, we'll figure it out, but we're just having fun. So, that's the kind of fun stuff we do, old men together. We also want to be good citizens, so we have some services that we perform for the town. Since 1972, we have organized the staff to provide the men for the flu clinic, the annual flu clinic, all the guys you see telling you where to go, or sign up, or get your shot, those are all Old Guard people. We also work with the town on the dog rabies shot, last year, this guy got fipped, holding the dog, and we're gonna get a shot. We are an honored sponsor of the Lacey Food Bank, it means we give enough money to feed at least one family for a year. In addition to that, we have another gentleman who's not here tonight, takes up a collection, shakes us down at the meetings for Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Easter, and he goes to the food bank and gets the name of three or four families that are having a hard time at the holidays, takes the money we've donated, and buys gift cards at ShopRite, and takes it over to the families and gives it to them, so they can have a good substantial meal. He also works with Van Holton, the chocolate store over there, they donate chocolate candies for the, has to be a family with kids, that's the law requirement, and that they, Van Holton's provides chocolate for the kids' donations, but we get some great thank you letters, so we really get something out of doing that. Many of our guys work at the food bank, we try to give, we try to give things to the organizations in town what they need. A year before last, we gave a dry suit to the Lacey underwater rescue team, and learned tonight, our budget is nowhere near as big as that, it's a pleasure, you're gonna hear what they're giving to these firemen in a minute or two, that would bust our budget for three years, but congratulations, folks. We also give donations to the police department, fire department, first aid squads, we've, since 1975, we've given two scholarships to the Lacey High School, you'll see two of our guys there in the spring presenting the two scholarships, we do that every year. We participate in the Memorial Day Parade, we have five World War II veterans in our organization, nineteen Korea, and more Vietnam, and more from the recent activities. One of those World War II guys still walks the parade from the church up to here, and we participate with the service up here, we get a little talk, we donate a wreath for the service and what have you. So, the last thing that we do, that I appreciate, oh, those are firemen, they're not cops, yes, we have no policemen here, when the police try to improve their appearance by growing facial hair, in October and November, we give a donation to their, generous donation to their cancer fund drive, I think facial hair really improves the look of people. So anyway, that's who we are, what we are, what we do, and I'd like to close with a comment to all the ladies in Lacey Township who may be watching this, if you are married or living with a retired man, and would like a quiet, peaceful, relaxed Monday morning, send them over to the Old Guard meetings. We'll talk to them, we'll give them coffee and doughnuts, who knows, he might even enjoy it, and you'll have a peaceful day. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, that was great, thank you, very much.
Thank you, I didn't know you were a stand-up comedian.
That was good, that was really good.
That's good, that was good. But it's our privilege and pleasure to present a check for $5,292 for four bottles for the fire department. It's our privilege to present this to you because of everything you do for us. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
We are gonna run out because we have to get to a lodge meeting right now, but we are going to the lodge meeting to pledge $1,000 for the police unity tour. Give them a check that Monday.
Before we run out, we're just gonna comment real quickly. You know, Don, Rosemary, you're always here. I mean, you were here two or three weeks, two or three meetings back for the police ...
They bring their beds and stay.
Perfect. Matter of fact, I'm sure they would love to have you on their membership also, so we can find you a holdup. But, you know, we can't thank you enough. The Elks Lodge is always there for us. You come through on so many occasions when we can't fund certain things. And I know Scotty, you know, and I had talked about it, you know, we're trying to fund other bottles in the budget this year, but doing this is such a major thing for the township and for the fire department itself, and we certainly can't thank you enough. So, go back and thank each and every one of you. Not to hold you up, but before Mike Sowa and the gang had to leave the building, I just wanna, you know, thank you for coming because the Old Guard is probably the largest group of unsung heroes in this town. You do so much for the community, you know. I never knew that you enjoyed yourselves as much as you do because when I was mayor and came to the meetings, it was like, okay, here's your coffee, go sit over there, and, you know. But it seems like you treat Nikki a lot better than me, but, you know. Hands down, you know, we can never thank you enough because you are involved in so many different facets, and you never, you know, get enough, you know, good praise for all the stuff that you do. So, thank you so much for coming out. Mike, I never knew you were such a comedian, so.
Thank you, Gary, but he's better looking.
But I'm the only one that actually appeared to qualify as a part of your group, so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I mean, we always say that budgets are, they're not easy things. Our Elks are there not some of the time, all the time. And they are the largest civic group that we have. Just this meeting alone, a basic township committee meeting, they're all important. But here we have a meeting this evening on a Thursday night, and our Elks Club drops $7,000 or $8,000 on our emergency services. I mean, you know, these guys, it's, these men and women and their families and what they go through, and it's pretty difficult. I'm certain that, I don't know if I could run into a burning fire or a car on fire. I wouldn't know how to do it. So, I always liked being invited to the Jaws of Life Expositions. I find them fascinating. It's an amazing machine that you have. And thank you so much to the Elks for what you do, really. It helps us supplement, if we can go to a better group of people. Thank you.
Thank you, but they're the heroes.
Yes, they are.
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanna echo some of those comments. We consider most of these service organizations in town partners with us, the Old Guard, the fire companies also. They allow us to pick up some of the slack that we can't provide services to, so we just wanna thank you very much.
As for myself, same comments, but I wanna say, that's why I always say the volunteer organizations in this town, what they do to support all of our service entities, I really appreciate it. I really do. And that's why I always want to put yous in the limelight because you help us make things possible. And these gentlemen here, as well as the men in blue, put their lives on the line, and to give them these tools that they need are, no doubt, very, very much thankful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No picture?
Yes.
Go ahead, Nick.
That smile is not good.
Always.
I'm good. How about yourself? How's your wife?
Yeah, pull together closer.
The biggest guy.
Biggest guy standing in front of my guy.
Thank you. They're great.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Do you take one? He goes in a block, burning building, he won't take to get a picture.
I have a camera slide for all the pictures I take.
Ah, he's taking like my husband number.
Yes.
Have you been in touch with Aunt Kathy for that?
Yeah. She's a good spring.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I let him do those.
Did you get your good side?
I think I got it. Did you get my good side?
I hope so much. This is a reminder to everybody, they like savings time this weekend. Make sure you change your batteries. Thank you. I gotta get my clothes in.
Oh, you got it. That's good.
Everybody else is, right, so sure.
My name is Scott Naren, the fire chief of the Forkett River Fire Department. Just wanted to say on behalf of the entire department and all its members, we really appreciate the gracious donation that the Elks Club gave us. And if everybody doesn't understand what that is, what they're helping us buy, it's the air cylinders that we wear that provide breathing air for our apparatus when we go into a toxic atmosphere to fight fire or sable light. So, we definitely need them, and we're just very, very happy that they were gracious enough to help us out, so. We wanted to thank the township community, so.
Thanks, Scott.
All right. Let's go on to leave, and then we can go on to item three.
Mike, thank you very much again. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Number three? Let's go.
Request to post signs.
The Lacy High School Performing Arts Boosters Association is having what is known as a performing arts color run on April 28th at the high school. They are looking to post signs throughout the community one week in advance, and we just need a motion to approve.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special use permit.
Okay, first is Grizes has been sold. There is a new owner there. They are looking to have a grand reopening event on April 7th and 8th, since it's a special use permit outside the scope of their zoning approval, and it's gonna be taking place outside as well. I need permission to authorize that.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item B is, in the parking lot of Kohl's, they've had this for the past couple of years, they do an evening car show, which will begin on March 20th and run through October 30th. It's after the Kohl's store closes, and it's from 9:00, no, it's actually from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM to display cars in the parking lot. There's never been any problems or issues with the police. We have granted it in years past. I just need permission to grant that if we wish to do so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do need to go into executive session prior to going to township, so I'm gonna read the resolution. Will we get to that? It's a resolution number 98. Resolution, Township Committee, County of Washington, State of New Jersey, authorized in community executive session to discuss matters of personnel anticipated pending litigation and matters of real estate. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
And a motion to adjourn, please.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back as soon as we're done with our business.